All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the May 18th New Canaan Board of Education meeting. First up, we have a number of minutes to approve. First, from May 4th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Brendan, second. Sheri, all in favor? It's unanimous. Next is the May 11th meeting. Motion? Julie, second. Bob, all in favor? Okay, and then lastly, May 14th. Motion to approve? Jen, second. Brendan, you actually weren't at that meeting. Okay, Penny, all in favor? Okay, extensions? Brendan, okay, great, thank you. Okay, and then moving on to this evening's agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda? First Sheri, second Julie, all in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. All right, the New Canaan comments from the public. The New Canaan Board of Education is committed to open and transparent governance of the school district. If you would like to make public comments, please, as we've done in the past, please raise your hand via the chat and we will give you speaking privileges. Is there anyone wishing to address the board?
Okay.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on, right, get right into reports and recognition with a district update from Dr. Letzey.
Yes, hello again, and let me start by thanking the board for your willingness to can to meet often over the course of these last few weeks and months. It's been very helpful for us in this unknown circumstance and situation to be able to get together to to have conversations and keep things moving forward. The, I thought I'd give a quick update and then certainly, as typical, you're welcome to ask any questions, follow up on anything that may be of particular interest or curiosity or, you know, importance to you. First to share, the email went out last week about the calendar adjustments. And again, thank you for getting together in that special meeting. Feedback has been positive for the most part. I mean, people were grateful that the board, administration took into account the feedback they'd received and tried to find a middle ground that worked best for everyone. I do want to share an apology with a small group of students, those that are taking APs this Friday. We asked all of their teachers to be kind to them on Friday and to make it up to them, but unfortunately, it was just another, there's nothing we could do. There were a couple of AP tests on that day. I did speak with their teachers, one in particular, Ms. Goldhawk, who has the largest group, and she told me she'd be very nice to them to make it up for us. But beyond that, it's, I think, very positive across the board and the right things. We've been reviewing the end of the year plans now. Our principals, others have been very creative at all the levels. And at our high school, our students and parents, the staff, have really been working together to help shape the graduation plans and that proposal. So I'm meeting over the course of this week with members of the Emergency Operations Center, sharing the plans, talking through with the Health Department and others. While there may be some small adjustments on balance, I think that we're in really good shape and a really good place. The proposals that are coming forward are all really within the guidelines, both from the state around maintaining fidelity with Executive Order 7X, which talks about groups no larger than five, and with our local health department and the requirements around what we need to do in order to keep people safe. I hope that, I'm optimistic, we'll be able to announce all of these different plans by the end of this week. You know, we'll sort of, we'll let people know at the building level as things come together and are approved, and then we'll put something out in general for everybody. But for, I've had a number of questions from parents and students about high school graduation and whether or not it would be virtual. The resounding feedback we received from high school students and some parents was that they don't want a virtual graduation. They'd like some type of an experience, and I absolutely understand that. So that's where we're working within the bounds and working to make it, make some type of an actual IRL, you know, in real life experience for kids. So working on that. I also want to recognize Jay Egan, who's been working really hard to find ways to recognize and honor our senior athletes. I want to just commend him to you and to the public to say that, you know, we owe Jay a debt of gratitude. He's put so much thought and effort into developing a couple of opportunities for our senior athletes to be recognized, to celebrate, to take some pictures, to get their plaques, to see their coaches, and try to bring some closure to their seasons. We all know how hard our kids work at everything they do. And our, you know, senior athletes always have some special opportunities at the end of the year, so we're working hard to recreate those. And again, by the end of this week, if not the end of the day tomorrow, I'll be able to share specifics with Jay and we'll be able, I think, move those forward. Again, he put some really good plans together for us. You know, as we continue forward before talking about summer or next year, I do think it's important to recognize what's going on in order to close out this year. You know, we, our minds go and race ahead and we think about what are we going to have to do this summer, what are we going to have to do to reopen? But really, it's important for us as a district and for everyone to think about what has to occur to close out the 2019-2020 school year. You know, in a typical year, we've got long checklists that our teachers go through and they work with the administrators and others, and they'll check off that they've returned this, done that, packed this, moved this around, gotten our rooms ready. This year is so different, it's posed a real challenge for folks. But luckily, you know, we have the best team going. So our principals, our secretaries, custodians, captains, monitors, administrators across the board, the folks here have all been working together to manage this room clean out and kind of end of the year closure experience so that we can, teachers can get their stuff, kids can come in to get their stuff, and we can get the rooms ready to be cleaned the way that we want to and need to clean them, you know, in the next couple of, the next month and two. At the same time, we're scheduling, you know, teachers to come in and get their stuff, we're scheduling students and families to come in and get their things. We've said if there's something essential to come, to come get it. If it's something that's not essential, if it's a water bottle or a pencil case that's, you know, don't need, and you can leave it, leave it. And then we'll donate it if we can donate it or just do what we have to do. If you do come in, just, you don't have to sort through essential and non-essential, just empty it, just take it. But we're just saying, we're using that language around essential to be, if, if you don't need to come in to get your things, don't, because that adds complexity. Better off having fewer people come to the buildings. But if you do need to come in, there's an opportunity to do that in the contact. You know, the principals have sent information out and how to do it. With all of this going on, we're also planning in another week or two to implement our plans to collect the items back that have been distributed. So we've got to move out, things out of the building and out of the classrooms and get those ready. And then we're also thinking about how do we get back technology, textbooks, other supplies that have been distributed out to students for the program for the distance learning. So we're doing this while we're planning that, and that information will go out. The closeout of a school year is a massive undertaking and a good year. You know, this is something that takes a lot of work and thought and planning. This year, it's very different, but again, we're lucky to have such a talented team working on our behalf to, to manage all of those different pieces. As far as the, the summer goes and beyond, you know, we're, we're waiting for guidance from the state. We were optimistic that we'd have some on the 15th. We don't have it yet, but we're not waiting and standing still at the same time. What we're doing is bringing in products to test. We're continuing to research, we're continuing to participate in local and statewide conversations. We're researching and even talking with colleagues and others across the borders over in New York through the tri-state consortium. We've activated that network, I mean, those conversations. We are, look, going to webinars about things happening overseas to learn from those experiences, since they're a few months ahead of us. We continue to learn quite a bit about what we think it's going to take to reopen. So that when, even when the guidance comes out, we're prepared and ready to, to do what we have to do to get our schools going. We've been working hard for a while and planning on that. So as we talk about the BOE committee in a little bit, we can talk about some thoughts we have for first meeting and sharing some specifics of that, you know, a little bit later. The, in each of the functional areas across the district, we're continuing forward. Our distance learning continues onwards. You know, again, that change in schedule, I think, will help the pace for people. This week, we have school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Friday, we have off from distance learning. We have Monday off for Memorial Day, you know, and then the four-day weeks going. We're continuing in that vein. Our senior, our seniors at the high school have been invited to participate in a senior experience. It's not the internship, but it's something different, more of an independent type study where they're given opportunity to research something, to do something, to make a contribution. So the high school is working through that. Our hiring is moving forward, you know, the, we're still doing our, following the process with as much fidelity as we can with our screening interviews, our committee interviews, our, you know, third interviews and follow-ups and doing all of that work. And, you know, our district processes are continuing. We're continuing to provide food for our students, our free and reduced lunch. We're still cooking meals on wheels. We are doing the, every, once every two weeks, shopping for the vulnerable seniors. And another thing that we just added this last week is partnering with a group called Filling in the Blanks. And what they do is provide a package of food to families on, at some point during the week, to fill in the blanks being over the weekend. So your students on free and reduced lunch, they're getting the, the food five days a week, but what happens on the weekends? They sort of, they try to fill in the blanks there by providing some food, some shelf-stable food that's a little different than what we prepare and deliver for our lunches. And that's to benefit our kids as well. I'm very grateful for, for that organization reaching out to ask if there was a way they could help out and get involved, and we looped them right in. So with that, glad to answer any questions. And glad to not answer any questions. Great.
Things are moving along, so.
Great.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Letzey. So next up, we have the Statement of Accounts with Dr. Keating.
Before you tonight, you have the April Statement of Accounts, year-to-date through April, 10 months of activity. And just to recap for you, we have spent 74% of the budget. We have encumbered 22.2%, and there's 3.7% that has not been encumbered. Over the past few weeks, we have prepared a very detailed reforecast through the end of the year after learning that we would not be opening in May. And so the numbers have changed considerably from our former, a prior forecast for year-end. So for example, with regards to salary accounts, we expect to have a remaining balance of $363,000 in that account. So all salaries combined would be 363. And for our complete benefits, we expect to have $81,000 remaining. So that's approximately $440,000. The majority of our remaining savings, however, are related to non-salary accounts. And at the current estimate, based on a review of our accounts, we do believe we could have close to $1 million remaining in non-salary accounts. So we're looking at approximately 1.4 million remaining in the budget. Now, with that said, we do have COVID-related expenses that we're going to incur. So those could range, right now, we have on the books an actual of $88,000 just from the operating budget, not including food services. And that today has grown to $190,000, and that's the combined food service and general fund. As we go through the next month and a half, we're going to be reviewing a lot of the requirements that we could possibly have once we have guidelines with regards to preparing the buildings to accept students in September. And so there's some things there that could cost us some money. And as we have good information, we will likely come to our committee that's going to be formed tonight to talk about those expenditures and to order the supplies and the equipment. And the reason why we do need to move quickly now is because a lot of the sourcing for this, these supplies and equipment is running out. We have thousands of schools in the United States, not to mention around the world, who are simultaneously buying for these supplies and equipment. So we're doing a lot of research. We've talked to many people and just very high-level type of things that we know that we're going to need. We're really looking to source those in right now. So as the committee comes together in the next couple of days, hopefully, we'll have some good information to share with them. But I do expect cutting into that $1.4 million in some way. We just currently don't know about that. And so to that end, we're going to be looking to the town to consider a non-lapsing account for these funds. And Brian can talk a little bit more. I know he's been advocating for this for us. And it's really a situational thing for us. It's a one-time thing whereby we are going to need to make decisions and purchase things for the opening of school as we know about them. We're not going to have time, the luxury of time, as you'd say, to go through a process for approval. So that's something that we're going to pursue with the town boards in the next week or so. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Keating. I just, you know, want to reiterate one of the points that you made about time. I think, you know, as, as many of us are seeing, we're trying to order any kind of home, home goods or supplies or paper goods. It's not only the availability, but then it's the lead times. And when you think about how many weeks we have before we would, you know, look to reopen our schools, it's, it's very little time. So I just, I feel strongly that, you know, this, this committee, we need to move, you know, very forward very quickly with the town support to, to secure these items, to make sure that we can reopen in a safe way for our students and our staff.
Thank you.
Brendan. Yeah, I'm equally supportive. I think it's important that you have the flexibility that you need. And, you know, you also have, you're going to need the flexibility, I think, right up until when school begins. You're not sure, we are not sure what might be needed, you know, in the various schools, and I think you need to be able to react, you know, really, really quickly. And I also think we probably have to be maybe a little bit more forward-thinking in terms of when we, when we order things and probably, you know, take, you know, take some risks as it relates to making sure that our kids and, you know, faculty and staff have what they need in school to protect themselves. You know, versus wait until the 11th hour and only buy exactly what it is we need. I just, I don't think we're in that kind of a situation. So I'm totally supportive of maintaining that fund, and I, I hope slash expect the town will be, will be supportive as well. I think it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. Just so the whole board understands what we mean when we talk about that fund, it's, the state allows you, now it's up to 2% of your operating budget to create what they call a non-lapsing fund, where money that remains in a school board's budget at the end of the year can be transferred into that fund, and that won't lapse at the end. And the fund has to be earmarked for a specific purpose. Some districts have created it for special education, some have created it for technology, some have created it for capital-type projects. What we're proposing and developing a proposal around is to create one specifically for COVID-related expenses. And what it would do is, would be expedite the accessing of those resources so that, because right now, if it, if we were to go forward business as usual, if there are additional costs, it would go through the traditional appropriation process before the Board of Finance, before the Town Council, and it could take quite some time. And that time could be the difference between getting something here on time to open schools or not. So given that we're anticipating some savings as a result of the closure this year, creating a non-lapsing account for this purpose that would be funded by school district, you know, this year's appropriation, just would roll forward, seems to, it's, seems to be the appropriate mechanism that exists in order to help us to make those decisions, be decisive, get things on hand, and, and, you know, get things ready for our kids. A good example of why this is important is the masks that we ordered. We know the company we ordered them through is doing everything they can to get them here as quickly as possible, but it's taking about twice as long as we had expected on the day that we ordered them, just because of delays in shipping. You know, it's, it just takes longer. Things to move through customs, things to move over the ships, things to be, to do everything that needs to get be done for, they, they're made, they're ready for us, but it's still going to be 10 days before, 10 business days we anticipate before they're actually here, which is significantly longer than we had thought. If we waited another week to order those, it probably would be at least two weeks longer before we get them. So that's the, what we're seeing in the marketplace around things, and those are masks. You know, and there's a whole host of things that we're anticipating needing. So that's, the purpose of the account would be, would be specifically earmarked for that purpose. It would allow us to access it more quickly. There still would be communication, of course, with the town boards whenever, whenever we did, but it would, I think, help us to be responsive and nimble in a very complex and dynamic environment. Penny?
So I think, so I guess, what, what are you, are you seeing as the timeline for getting this fund established? I think it's critical because, I mean, there, there's a lot of positive, you get, get into a lot of detail when the town bodies go through our budget, but it's not nimble, and it, and you cannot respond quickly. So I think in this situation, in order to protect the health and safety of the students and the staff, we really do need, it'd be so appropriate to have a COVID-related fund. So are you, what meetings are you thinking go to so that we can support this process?
I haven't looked at the calendar of meetings. I know that really June 30th would be the drop-dead date, because that's the end of our fiscal year, I imagine. So I'd want to work, work backwards from there. But like, we will be getting something together that we can bring to the Board of Finance as, as soon as their next meeting, if we can get on the agenda. As long as it's not tomorrow.
I don't think it is. I'm looking at, I'm looking at the meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not alone in this. You know, I'd love to say this is our great idea and everything else, but this is all around the, the region, folks are making a similar request, I believe, for the same reasons. I mean, this is, it's a mechanism that exists to help Boards of Ed for, in different, for different reasons, and certainly seems to apply now, given everything we're going through.
Yeah, it looks like the 12th of June is the next Board of Finance meeting. Oh, no, that's May, I'm sorry, wrong one. But about that, it's probably the second.
The ninth, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and I will say, folks have been excellent about getting together and meeting for a specific purpose as well. So if we need to expedite more than that, I would, I can reach out to Todd and see if we can get something going.
Okay, no other questions? All right, so we have one act, one action item tonight, which is the second read of the new committee, the Special Board of Education Committee, titled Reopen NCPS, and Dr. Letzey, are you able to pull it up on the screen?
I am. I did email it as well, but I'm glad to pull it right up here. Let's see. It's probably easier for most to do that. There we go. Is that all right for everyone? Would you like me to just hit a couple of points, Katrina?
Sure, yep.
Okay. So the charge has, has remained generally the same. The convers, conversation from the board meeting last week was about the scope and the comp, the composition. And, you know, there's, since it is a Board of Education Committee, the, what's on the draft now is the, the committee will include three or more Board of Education members as designated by the Board Chair. The second paragraph talks about other participation, right, participation from other folks. And that the committee will invite district-level administrators, NCA representatives to participate in the meetings. And as the board discussed last time, we feel that, that partnership with the NCEA continues to be so important and valuable for us in our district. And the, that additionally, ad hoc town representatives would be invited as appropriate according to the meeting agendas, and then Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance. We also added in members of the Emergency Operations Center, because that is police, fire, others that could be helpful in those conversations, members of the community as well. They would be invited according to the agenda item in order to share their expertise or consult on matters related to resource requirements, budgets, school and building operations, and the impact on the community. The difference here is that it remains a Board of Education member committee, and others are participating in that meeting. Because it is a Board of Education agenda that's being set each time. So the, the other members are ad hoc. It's the Board of Ed Committee that schedules the meetings and puts the agenda together. And as you know, as a committee of the board, no action is taken. It's all, all recommendations to the full board. And there you have it. See if that works based on the feedback from last week.
And, you know, for those that are watching, I mean, in addition, like all Board of Education meetings that are posted and available for public viewing.
That's right.
Sheri? Just, sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead, Sheri.
I'm fully answered of this committee and the overall structure as you've outlined here. Just one small suggestion is to add parents and members of the community. Just, I think it's important to specifically state parents. And then my other question is, will the reopening of summer programs and specifically the enrichment programs be overseen by this committee? I mean, obviously, we know, we're waiting from the governor's office as he'll be sending out mandates and health and safety requirements, but in terms of like the enrichment programs, which are optional and which would in fact require us reopening schools this summer to administer, I'm just wondering if those, if that decision-making process will go through this committee, or if that will be handled separately?
I anticipate that that would be handled separately and communicated to this committee and to the full board. But the, really, you're right, that we're going to be constrained by the guidance as that comes. We've asked our groups to plan for virtual, thinking that that takes more time and effort, and then if there is something that does shift significantly, it's easier to go back to live. So we are looking at doing some things virtually. There is certainly an argument to be made to keep the buildings as empty as possible over the summer, so that we can do everything we need to do to prepare for the fall. So that's going to be more of an administrative decision than anything else. We were anticipating getting some guidance on the 15th. It hasn't come yet. I'm sure it'll be out soon. But we are in conversation about how much can we do virtually effectively and in order to keep the buildings as empty as possible.
Right. And, and I imagine there's two decision-making facts, which is, one is, which are more of the substantive programs versus the optional enrichment programs, correct? I would assume that.
That's correct. Absolutely. Yep, there are, actually, there are multiple programs. The, you, when you, as you dig into it, you have your, the enrichment program that you talked about, our extended school year program, the ESY, which is for our special education program. And then we, of course, have athletics through the Booster Club. We have other clubs that, that use the school. And then we have the fields and the athletic types of things that happen outside on the fields. We were, some rentals that have been set up already in some of the buildings and having to review each one to make a decision around, again, health and safety first and, you know, planning forward and see the best we can do. So there are many different considerations that we're already reviewing that'll all come into play as we make those decisions one by one.
I just, I just wanted to say I'm supportive of this. I think the scope, composition, all of this makes sense. And I would just, I like the idea that we're getting, that the board will get updated regularly. I think that's, you know, really important just to make sure we're all up to speed. And for those who are not on this committee, just have a, a chance, you know, basically at every meeting to provide their feedback, because this is obviously, you know, the, the number one most important issue that we're dealing with, you know, day to day.
I have to scroll through to look and see if any hands are up, so.
I just started speaking because I didn't know how else to handle it.
No, that's, that's the right thing to do. I'll stop the share and, and we can all be on the screen again.
Any other questions or comments? I would just ask if anyone, you know, for those that are interested in participating on this committee, please let me know as, you know, by tomorrow, if possible. Because I know we, we do want to move forward pretty quickly. Okay, so with that, we need to just take a vote to approve the charter for the Special Board of Education Committee. All in favor?
You're going to make a motion, no?
The motion was made and seconded at our last meeting during the first reading, so I think that was. Thank you. Okay, all right, great. Thank you all.
So I'll just add one or two other quick, very quick things to the, to this conversation. One is that all of our meetings, generally with our committee meetings, we schedule them through the members, the Board of Ed members on the committee. With this one, we'll schedule them through the Board of Ed members on the committee, and then we'll send an email out to the whole, whole board to let you know when those meetings are, because as you know, all of our meetings are in public. to let you know when those meetings are, because as you know, all of our meetings are in public, and you're welcome to attend any of them, even if you're not sort of officially on the committee, and that, that may be helpful. And the second thing is, the cabinet has been working on a sketch of a presentation to just sort of get up to speed on everything that we've been doing, and that we'll be glad to share with the committee at the first meeting.
Great. Okay, thank you. All right. So at this point, are there any comments from the public? Anybody who wishes to address the board? Okay.
Quiet night.
It is a quiet night. Seeing none, announcements and future business? Anything else, Dr. Lettsi?
No, you know, it is a quiet night because that's one of the benefits, is meeting so often. Thank you for that. No, we are continuing onward. So thank you.
Okay. This might be our fastest meeting ever.
It's definitely the fastest one I've been involved with.
We'll take it. Well, what, we have two or three last week, so it's all right. And we'll keep, keep things moving forward. It's good.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Brendan, second. Jen, all in favor? All right.
Great.
Thank you all. Good night.
Night.